Good evening, everybody. Let me just make sure my computer is the muted one this time. It is very good. Welcome to our regular medium council on Wednesday, September 4th, 2024. We started at four o'clock within camera session and we are going to rise and come out of that. Which I have a motion here moved by Deputy Mayor Prost, seconded by Counselor Patel, that council receives information. No. Motion? Oh, my introduction. Yeah, okay. I was gonna do it after, but I'll do it upfront. Welcome, everybody, to our special to our special medium council. A regular medium council. Actually, we had two specials and it's Wednesday, September 4th, 2024. Call this meeting in order. I'd like to start with our traditional land acknowledgement. The town of Midland acknowledges located on land, which is traditional and treaty territory. If not, Nishnabik people now known as Triple Y Tri-council, rise of Bosley First Nation, Rama First Nation, and then Georgian Island First Nations. This territory is within pre-confederation treaty five and treaty sixteen included within the Williams treaties of 1923. The town of Midland also recognizes located on land, which is traditional territory of the Huron-Wendat and the historic homelands of the Maytee. Pausing for effect, given the article that I read in the news today. And that our town is home to a large and diverse community of indigenous people. I'd now like to deliver the following safety message. Should the fire alarm activate, please exit the room in an orderly fashion and proceed to the evacuation assembly area, which is located in the upper parking lot. You may exit through the main entrance, double glass doors, make an immediate left and proceed out the front doors or through the secondary exit. Up the stairs, check the door for heat before opening of its safe exit on the second floor, turn right and proceed out the door in front of you. Washrooms are located on the second floor and elevators located just outside the main entrance. As Midland has a respectful workplace policy, anyone that exhibits violent or harassing behavior will be asked to leave. Members of audience are to maintain order and quiet and not to address council, except for permission to the chair. All cell phones, pagers and other electronic devices which made a sound are to be turned off or set to non-audible. That's a good reminder for us, council. Uh, no person shall display signs or placards, applaud participants in debate or engage in conversations, electronic or otherwise, or behave in a way that may disrupt proceedings of council. For anyone requiring a hearing assist device, please advise the clerk and she will arrange with her IT staff to provide you with said device. Council meetings are recorded via Zoom and are posted on the town's YouTube site. The meetings are also broadcast on Rogers TV Midland Channel 53. Individual recording, broadcasting or streaming of our meetings by the public or any member is not permitted without express consent of the clerk and all those present. With that, I will ask for a silent moment of reflection before we get into this evening's meeting. Thank you. Council, before I continue or any declarations of conflict of interest relating to this evening's open agenda. Seeing none, one should present itself, just raise your hand and we will accommodate and the necessary paperwork can be filed with the clerk. I have motions arising from the closed meeting discussions. So I have a motion here moved by Deputy Mayor Prost, seconded by Counselor Patel. The council receives information and confirm the directions as outlined in the confidential verbal report and update provided by the chief administrative officer and the manager of procurement. At the closed meeting session of council held September 4th, 2024, with respect to the Little Lake Park stage and Ben Stell construction project renderings. All those in favor? That is carried. Next, move by Counselor East, seconded by Counselor Major, whose first official meeting is this evening. Welcome, Counselor Major. The council receives information and confirm the directions as outlined in the confidential PowerPoint presentation verbal report updated provided by the Director of Human Resources and Director of Emergency Services, Fire Chief. At the closed meeting session of council held September 4th, September 4th, 2024 today, with respect to the 2024. Midland Professional Firefighter Association Collective bargaining. A ladder discussion in camera council. All those in favor? Any opposed? It's carried. Next, move by Counselor Meredith, seconded by Counselor Bald, that council receive as information and confirm the directions as outlined in the confidential verbal report and update provided by the chief administrative officer and the director of human resources. At the closed meeting session of council held September 4th, 2024, with respect to organizational updates. Other discussion in camera council. All those in favor? Any opposed? That is carried. All right. Number nine, approval of the agenda moved by Counselor Balls, seconded by Deputy Mayor Prost, that the contents of the regular council with closed session agenda for September 4th, 2024 be approved. All those in favor? Opposed? Any carried? Next, moving on to our consent agenda, moved by Counselor McDonald, seconded by Counselor East, that the items and related recommendations contained within the September 4th, 2024 consent agenda as consent items having been considered by council. Be adopted with the exception of two items pulled. Item 10.4.1 CSR 2024-73, the 2025 budget outlook. And item 10.4.3 CSR 24, 2024-75, 2021 consolidated financial statements approval. Which will be considered under section 17 reports and other items withdrawn from the consent agenda for councils consideration. Including presentations by consultants regarding a report under consideration. Council, before I call the question, this is the opportunity to speak to any matters that are about to be passed en masse on the consent agenda. Make any comments and? Anybody got anything? There's lots on it. Lots of CIP information. Counselor McDonald.
Thank you. Mayor Gordon, just a a few comments. Just bear with me. I thought it was organized here. Oh, I just wanted to comment on the minutes that the service level request. Or the 15 appointment. That I was going to proceed with the waypoint transitional employment opportunity that was presented to us. In on June 12. That I'm going to proceed with that service level request in the budget. I just thought. If I say it out loud, if I forget to do it, someone else will remember. And in the CPCTA not participating in user study. I said proceed number 17.1. Then they're asking us to request their support and severance sound environmental thing. So a little bit of contradiction there. In my mind, I don't know why I felt I wanted to mention that. And then the reference to the staff report on the revised audit committee terms of reference. I just wondered who sits on the committee and when do they meet and is all of council invited? That's for the audit committee.
Thank you, Counselor. Just quickly note on 17.1, it's been withdrawn from the consent agenda. So we're gonna have a full discussion on that matter later today. In the meeting. Any other questions? Is there any response from staff or any?
So is I just asked that who sits on the audit committee?
Counselor Meredith, if you can chime in on that, you're a member?
Myself and Counselor Bald sit on the on the audit committee presently. But you're you're more than welcome to come and I guess sit in the audience and or you can ask the questions here.
Thank you. Okay. It's such an exciting committee. I hate to
Oh, yes, it's exciting.
Um. Okay, I'll discuss it further with the review like of who sits on what committees and that. I'd ask the question, is that being reviewed or are we with the committees we're on now?
Um, okay. So that's we're not really we're out of scope on what we're talking about here, but I can talk to you offline about that, but just at a high level. Unless somebody wants to be moved on a committee, which does happen periodically, then typically they're for the term. I had mused changing people every year, whatever, didn't seem to go over well. And then it turned out we had to do that anyway because of the two deaths. So just at a high level, you and I can have a conversation offline if you'd like about that.
Thank you, Mayor Gordon.
Okay, Counselor Meredith.
Just one, oh, sorry. Right, so these, when they ask for extensions in these projects. Are we getting compensated for staff time? From doing the like such as these reports and so forth, because there's a there's one has a two-year extension. Draft plan extension. Which is fine, but I just want to make sure that we're getting compensated for for those extensions.
Through you, your worship to Counselor Meredith. As you know, I'm I'm not your planner, even though I have some planning experience. So I'll tell you the best that I can. They every developer is allowed to request a draft plan extension. That doesn't mean that council has to give them the draft plan extension. But they're allowed to ask and there is no immediate compensation for staff that if they extend it. That doesn't that wouldn't come until you actually had a development agreement. And but I stand to be corrected, but I believe that that's the correct answer. If if Mr. Ferguson was here, I think he'd nod his head.
Okay, thank you. And I imagine it wouldn't take up too much staff time to to this report. And that's why I'm asking you because I didn't know actually who to to ask. It's the Mr. Parkinson wasn't here.
Again, through you, your worship to Counselor Meredith. There can be quite a bit of staff time up to draft approvals and beyond. So it really would depend on the situation. So I can't say that it wouldn't be much staff time, but just the managing of the extension itself would not be a large amount of staff time, but there's many other things beyond that 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 happened. But there is no compensation directly for that.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor McDonald.
Thank you. It's in regards to the renewal on Gervais Street. Is that the piece of property between? That has already been clear cut?
I'm going to your worship to Counselor McDonald. I'm gonna have to get back to you on that because I'd only be giving a guess rather than an answer.
Thank you.
I can help on that one if you'd like. So it was around last term when we were doing this. So yeah, it's the end of Gervais Street, effectively backs onto Norman's. Property there and there's a plan for a little cul-de-sac subdivision in there. And I believe that the people that were managing that, I believe there was a death. In the family either with the developer or somebody close to the project, or at least some serious health injuries. I hope I haven't declared the person dead. If they weren't, but there's a serious health concerns that caused the project to kind of go into stasis and it's lapsing. So my understanding is this is a procedural requirement to to keep the thing alive. We have the option of saying nope and making them all start all over again once they've regrouped, but they're looking for some extra time in this case. So it is the the property that was flattened out, ready to start moving ahead with the site plan and health issues. I was quite public at the time. Unfortunately, it led to its stalling. So they're asking for the the council's even though it's delegated authority, we still have to approve this council's blessing to have a bit more time while they regroup and try and build this cul-de-sac with homes, little townhomes.
Thank you. I guess the reason I'm mentioning it is to accentuate the need for a tree protection bylaw that's in the works. For Midland.
Fair enough. Anybody else? I know there's a lot on this consent agenda because we didn't deal with the CIP matters during our special meetings this summer. There's an awful lot in there. Okay, well, let's call out the request for the pickleball court. These kind of things, this is, you know, hasn't been pulled and no one has any issues with it. It's $189.84 forgiveness that's being requested for renting those courts for this special tournament that's happening. It's a Midland area pickleball club, having a tournament to raise money for Ukraine relief. So just people wonder where does this $189.84 come from? It comes from council's discretionary budget. So we're eating it out of our our discretionary budget, in case people are wondering where that comes from. Because we're always cautioned, you know, like people come to us all the time. They want fees waived for all kinds of valid things and eventually it just becomes free for everybody. So there there are things we can talk about budget time around requests like this to put caps and limits on it, you know, once per year or once per five years or once per event, or we can just continue to deal with it the way we do now, which are these sort of ad hoc requests. They come forward, but this wasn't pulled. I don't have any problem with it, but I did want to explain where that free money in air quotes comes from. And I wish them well because pickleball is a thriving sport. Not just for the the geriatric crowd, which was my first false perception of it. And it's quite the thing. And so I look forward to maybe joining them for a day down there and at least cheering them on. I don't have, there's lots of other stuff on here, but I don't have much to say about the rest of it. But that was the one I wanted to call out. Anybody else? Okie dokie. So we'll call the question on this consent agenda motion, if we all remember what it was. Be good. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. All right, motion here moved by Counselor Bald, seconded by Counselor Bald, that council resolve into the committee of the whole. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. We are now in committee the whole and I pass the chair over to Madam Deputy. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Gordon. So we start with public meetings or hearings. We have none. Presentations, we have none. Integrity Commissioner Recommendation Report, we have none. Deputations and petitions, we have one. And if you're following along, I'm at 15.1. So I it's for the 2024 Terry Fox Day and I'd like to introduce Mr. Don Chapman, who is here to provide an update with respect to the 2024 Terry Fox Day. Welcome, Mr. Chapman.
Well, I gotta do that. Thank you. Yes, mayor, council, staff, visitors, welcome all. Great to be here again. Make my little annual foray and come sharing news and asking for help as well. I have the pleasure of representing for our kind of four quadrants of the municipality with Tiny and Tay and Penetang included. We all are together in this thing for Terry Fox and I think that's the right way to run it for now. And it gives me great pleasure to do it as well. I'm going to talk very quickly about why we run because I think that's pretty obvious to all of you. Some old results and then kind of what we doing, what we're doing this year. And you are doing stuff this year, which is a delight for me. There's a lot that don't. You do. So thank you so much for doing that. You saw this year's theme, national theme is no matter what, it's kind of representing Terry and every time you think of Terry, you think of this guy running up a hill at nighttime in a pouring rain with a van behind him and a police car in front of him. And that man just kept going and kept going and get going. And how did he do it? I can't even imagine what that body went through. And but what a hero at the same time for us all. What a role model for us all. Oh, go ahead. Somebody's changing slides for me here, right? Thank you so much. So the the need again, it's two in five of us are going to experience cancer within our own lives, like the numbers are kind of big and scary. And that's why we must do something about it. And at the national level, the donors or the number of donors is going down. The amount of money they are donating is actually going up, which is a good sign in the short term, but can't you run out of gas pretty quick on that too? If you keep drawing on the same people and keep asking the same people, give a little more, give a little more, give a little more. You're gonna wear down your welcome pretty quick. So it's good that it's happening, but it's not good for the long term. The research we fund does great stuff. When I made this chart up, we were up in the 800,000, 800 million dollar range of stuff that happened since Terry began his first run in 1980. Were you now at the end of this year, we're at 900 million. That is a lot of money being thrown at this problem. The good news is a little lower down in here, it's working. Not every cancer is being beat to death and I hope it all will be beat to death in my lifetime, but it's working in pockets. There are types of cancers where the longevity rates and the survival rates are really improving incredibly. And that gives us hope that says if you can extrapolate that to the others. The world's going to be a better place. So it is happening. Just have faith. It is happening and have more than faith, have action. The Terry Fox Foundation is well-run. It is ranked against other charitable organizations and it ranked very, very high. It actually ran, it ranked first two years in a row, which has never happened before. So it it's good. I work with those people. They are great people. They know their stuff and they're committed as hell to to make this get better. So most of the money that we run around, we run around here and tap all of you on the shoulder and say, can you open your wallet a little wider, please? And we get some money all the time. But but we need to keep giving all of the money that we get and we do this. Every cent we collect here, we give back. We don't keep any money here. Our budget is zero. I don't buy anything. I scrounge everything. That's what we do. And so and it gives it difficult. Like if you think how the hell would you run a charitable organization? You might do something like you got to seed it first and feed it, feed it some money and get it going and staff it all up and have a nice building and all of that kind of stuff. We just come in and say, you've got nothing. Go make something out of the nothing and then give us the something. Right? All 80% of every dollar that we turn into our headquarters goes to a researcher, gets outplugged into a research project. It is not going into fancy buildings and it is not going into all kinds of marketing. We do have marketing programs, but a lot of them are just done with donated time, donated money, donated facilities. It's it's incredible. It's a hard way to run a charitable business. It's I would much rather I'll say, no, I won't say I'd rather. I love this model, but the the whole thing here is trying to get people to just say give it, give, give all of that and it will come back to you in many times over. So we keep, we spend nothing, we keep nothing, we give all our money away. Then the people we give it to give 80% of it to the researchers and that 20% that I left out there, that's what covers all the overheads. And if we can keep up that model and not get that that margin any skinnier, I want to keep that margin nice and high. Down at the bottom there, just benefits of giving organizations. One day I'm going to write a book on it if I live long enough. But I am a total believer that if if a business or an organization invests in a social cause. Great things will happen to that organization. All of their business metrics will get better, their money metrics will get better, their absenteeism will drop, their pride, their morale, all of those things are going to improve. I dare you to prove me wrong. Let's do it. Let's grab this whole this thing called Terry Fox. Let's grab this thing called researching cancer and beating it. We can do it together and it'll drive innovation and it'll drive the bottom line to get better and better and better. And with that, I want to slightly hit on the slides, please. I got a little bit of Tom Cruise in there, just in case you're wondering, my guest slide here is we've been doing really good lately. We had three consecutive years over 100,000 of income. And the the best thing is if you look at the third bullet there, we're the 11th highest contributing organization in Ontario. That is damn good for this little community here. We should be extremely proud of that. And then we should be doing a lot to get better and better and better. But we are hot stuff right now. We we collectively have raised over 2.6 million dollars that we sent in a check for 2.6 million dollars since 1980. That is a great thing going on here. And I'm seeing the the participation rates of people coming to our events and stuff like that is going up. You can see kind of I track it on the chart on the bottom there. Our revenue's been going up. Four out of the last five years, we've been over 100 grand. There's not many sites can say that, especially not our size. And one of those years was a COVID year, so we couldn't even have a major event. That was just people digging deep because they felt the need to. Participants is on the bottom of that little data band there. And we used to be up in the 7, 800 range of people who would come out and run. We went down to zero during two COVID years. And we are recovering now. We're getting back in the 6, 700 range and I'm hoping for 800. If we just keep on, we're doing what we're doing right now. Enough said. Good numbers and we should, again, I'm going to say be proud and then be proactive. Do it some more. Okay, going ahead, please. I don't need to spend much time on this. One thing, the Canada Day Parade ended up being a bonus for us. We were slotted in slot 20, I believe it was to to come up and we we had arranged to have a Terry Fox replica van and and a OPP cruiser from the 1980, just like in the pictures of Terry. And then me and some of my gang were in the middle sandwiched between those two things. Hey, don't we look like Terry? Give us your money, right? So what ended up happening was the OPP were short a driver that day by accident and they were supposed to leave the parade. When they their driver kind of got lost. We jumped in and said, oh, we've got an OPP driver in our car. It's just pretty old. And they moved him to the front. So we became the guy lead vehicle in that parade. Thank you for the good publicity. Oh, I should just mention auction. Auction, we started three years ago and it has now grown to, we were well over $10,000 last year. We didn't pay for one thing. We never bought anything. Everything was donated and everything was bought. Over 120, over 150 things were were bought back from us. And it didn't cost us a cent. You're going to see us continue to do that and make it bigger. And actually, when you if you're interested on here is the URL to get it, the auction, which goes live tomorrow. Little plug, little plug, grab one of these on the way out. Okay, I can keep going there, please. Uh, this is our strength. I brag about us all over the country when I get the chance to. We are really good. Enough said. There's so much. At the bottom, there is stuff that is more very practical and pragmatic stuff. We find it in tiny right now. But and it's not many other places. They've got a whole lot to offer us and they do offer it to us with tremendous support. But I really want to be thinking of this thing as as the larger community. It's not tiny. It's the four at least of us all together trying to do this. So again, I think we got a wonderful place. We got a wonderful attitude. We got wonderful results. We got wonderful people. What the hell else could we ask for? Okay, I think I'm near closing here, please. Oh, that's the this year's program. Some stuff happens over in the octagon-y kind of thing, hexagonal-y kind of thing. We have free lunch. We have a certain pizza establishment, which goes and feeds us everybody in the park as much as they want until they're stuffed. And there's no charge. We have ice cream providers, pop providers. I don't pay for anything and we offer everybody free lunch as much as they can eat. We have a coffee bar with a supplied. It used to be supplied to our volunteer crew. Now it is offered to everybody in the park. If you come, there will be donuts, muffins. Certain cookies of a certain brand name and some coffee and just it's great. Two live bands. We do shirt sales. You too can look like that. Maybe maybe you can't look quite that good, but shirt sales we do, we made $5,000 off shirt sales last year. We have a kid zone. We bring in live animals and this year we're having a train display. We're having the the library from Midland is coming and helping us out with some activities for kids. We do a warm-up where we make old people like me stretch in ways that they were never meant to stretch before. before. We go out on the run. It's a lot of fun, gets everybody laughing and we go do it. That's the program for this year. And one more slide, it'll actually be two. That's where we go. If you, any of you know the area of Perkins Field and then coming up towards Midland, you come up Bond Beach Road and you go up one side of the road and you come down the other side of the road. You high-five your neighbors as you're going by each other or make fun of them if you want, whatever you want to do. Two-way route seems to be enjoyed. We have a little loop at the top there, as you can see up in the very top right-hand corner. And we added that just to get it up so we could have a ten-kilometer route. Because a lot of bikers are with us and they want exact, we're really turned for, for ten K, right? We give it to them. We're doing a little work this year to try and make things easier on the people who are actually resident in that area in Perkins Field. They're kind of trapped for a little while in their house. Most of them are delightful people and they bring us cookies and juice and serve us as we run by their houses. We're trying to keep things as good as we can for those businesses and residences and still put on a great show. Enough said. This is what you can do and I am not going to grind you through this because you've been patient already. I thank you. I'll summarize as do something. I don't care what it is, a car wash, football game. I saw a bunch of guys playing baseball yesterday in Perkins Field Park and these people were not meant to play baseball, but they did and they did it for Terry. And it's wonderful. Just do your thing for Terry. It'll grow, it'll grow, it'll grow and we'll be saying goodbye to cancer before very much longer. And I thank you for your attention and time. Any questions or comments from?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chapman. I was just going to open the floor to all the councillors. But first I'd like to thank you very much to you and all your volunteers for all the hard work you do.
Thanks very much.
Does anybody have any? Councillor McDonald.
Thank you again. Terry Fox has always been part of my life, but I just wanted to comment on also on routes. We're sometimes given some samples of some of the people that nourish some sweet things that is greatly appreciated. And I even recall some people entertaining at the end of the driveway cheering us on. So it's, it's a lot of fun, for sure.
I know exactly the place you're talking about.
Mayor Gordon.
Thanks a lot for coming in again, Mr. Chapman. It's a, it's a yearly tradition. And when going back, I think to the early eighties, you know, every year, Terry Fox, we did it with school. We did it in college. You know, we certainly supported it through my policing career. And it's, it's been a privilege to continue that in council over the years. I've set up a, a, a sort of a page, a sponsorship team for the town of Midland staff and council that I'm encouraging my peers to join. You can either pledge money, if you have the ability, buy a shirt as well. Or just sign up and come out and walk, bike, whatever it takes, you know. Roll later, whatever you got to do. There's, nobody's judging you for how far you go, how, how far you get before you turn around. Just come out and do it. I've got a couple of shirts ordered. It's fantastic to see they got fat guy sizes, which is just great on the dropdown list. So I'll probably be wearing mine, be a tent when I'm done with it. And I will be riding my bike, not trying to run, you know, because you'd have to follow me to the favor later. But I certainly walked it in the past too. But anyway, I'm really looking forward to this year's event. We're all praying for good weather, although we do it rain or shine. And I certainly encourage all staff, you know, because I'm, I'm sure they're riveted in watching our council meetings to join my team if you haven't got one already or you don't want to go as an independent. Just visit my billgordon.ca page and you'll see a link to join and join the team. We've got two hundred and fifty dollars of my one thousand dollar goal raised on my page. And I have a five thousand dollar team-wide goal that we're trying to achieve collectively. So let's do this, council. Please join me and visit that page and sign up and let's, you know, show them the Team Midland approach. And I look forward to that day. So thank you for coming tonight and presenting and keeping us live to this, this amazing program that runs yearly.
Thank you very much. Thank you, councillor.
Don't go away yet. Councillor Patel.
Thank you, Chair. So thank you for the presentation and congratulations to achieving hundred thousand revenue for the last three years. And I have joined Mayor Gordon's team, so I'll be there Sunday.
Sunday.
I won't be running because I'll be biking. That's kind of what I do. So we'll see you on Sunday.
Thank you very much. I do have an information card. Can I hand those to somebody and just circulate them, press the URL and things like that on? And don't forget our, our auction starts tomorrow. URL number's on there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. Okay, moving on. Number sixteen, committee and local board delegation or memo, there are none. Seventeen, reports and other items withdrawn from the consent agenda for council's consideration includes consider, sorry, includes presentations by consultants regarding a report under consideration. Seventeen point one. May twenty ninth correspondence from Tay Township regarding request for support Severn Sound Environmental. That correspondence dated May twenty ninth, twenty twenty four from Tay Township be received and that the town of Midland request that the Severn Sound Environmental Association funding formula and letter of agreement be reviewed and updated. That the resolution be forwarded to the member of municipalities requesting support. Can I have a mover in a second or please? Mayor Gordon and councillor East. Oh, it's the, the motion's on the floor. Mayor Gordon.
Thanks. I just, I'm glad, I asked this to be pulled out of the CIP and put on our report. There'd been, this has been going around for a while, since you can see from May twenty ninth. But the timing of when we received it and the CIPs and our regular council meetings did not allow us to really speak to it until now. We came under some fire and criticism from one of our neighboring municipalities, well, it was Tay, I'll just say it, that we hadn't done anything about this and that we seemed to be, you know, given the cold shoulder while Penetang had agreed to sign on to it. And I think Tiny since then has agreed to in some capacity. And so I just wanted to clear the record that we just haven't had an opportunity, a regular meeting to deal with these things. We don't deal with this stuff at our special meetings, of which we've had plenty this summer, of course, with placing our vacant council seat. So I didn't want, I just want to set the record straight that we haven't, you know, omitted to be, to add our voice to this. It's certainly an important thing of the concern with, you know, just ballooning increases in their budget asks. But, you know, justified in, in the way that they articulate it, but ballooning nonetheless well above the norm and our seeming inability to push back or question it. And the only way to sort of give our repairs a relief is to dip into a reserve that we now are faced with having to replenish this time. The whole thing really has caused the mayors and councillors and even some members of the public to question, you know, what, how is this funding formula, sort, you know, was, how was it agreed to? What, how can we make it more relevant and modern today? And that's all this is asking. You know, really, there seems to be a bit more of an adversarial relationship between Tay and SSE that is well documented in the media. That leads me to believe that, you know, they may be looking to press the eject button, which is an option under the agreement. But to their credit, they haven't done that yet and they're asking simply for a full, frank and fair review of the funding formula to see if they can be more equitable for them. So I commend their efforts for that, but I just wanted to make the record clear that, you know, we didn't ignore this or put it off or, you know, just choose not to speak to it. This is our first opportunity and we're doing so. So that's why it's on the agenda tonight, folks. I fully support this. And quite frankly, the way the, the budgets are set, councillor Meredith is now our, our, our main rep on, on the SSE with councillor Bald is our backup. So we always have representation. The board sets the budgets and the direction. And if you can't get enough members on the board to say yes or no to increased funding, lo and behold, shouldn't be a surprise. It comes to the funding partners as a budget request. So if we, if we lack the ability to get enough sort of consensus on the board to maybe pump the brakes on some spending and, you know, things I've called scope creep in the past, then rearranging the funding formula to make it feel more equitable, make sure it's still modern and relevant, is the next best step. Because clearly we can't control a people vote other than, I can't even control our own members' vote, but I know the, you know, the way councillor Meredith leans when it comes to fiscal responsibility, which is why he was a, you know, I think a good, could shoe in for that position to work in tandem with councillor Bald to try and hold the line. But this is a, this is a sort of a tandem request. Let's look at the funding formula. So effectively what Tay's asking for and what, and what Georgian Bay Township before them have asked for is enough support from the member agencies at fifty percent plus one can compel the board to open up this funding formula and have it reviewed. I think Tiny's wish was that it would be an independent third party, so that doesn't feel like an agenda-driven thing. And I completely agree with that. And so how the mechanisms are up to, you know, the SSE, how they do this. But I think the desire to open up and look at this funding formula, which won't be done before the next budget, budget ask, to be clear. I don't, let's manage our expectations here. And we're probably expecting another bit of a doozy. You know, this, this winter, I think this is a good time to add our voice to the chorus. And so consequently, that's why it's on the agenda tonight for discussion and seeking your support to assign this and add our voice.
Do we have any further questions or comments? Councillor Meredith, please.
Yeah, thank you, Deputy Mayor Prost. I've had some conversations with Deputy Mayor Norris from, from Tay regarding the funding formula and and I'm totally on board with looking at it again. So, and then also, the first draft of, of the twenty twenty five budget, as you saw on, on the report here, you know, it was coming at eleven and a half percent. So, and the board agreed that the twenty twenty five increase right now is two point six eight percent. So pretty, pretty drastic decrease, but also on Mayor Gordon's point, we will have to replenish the, the reserve that, that we took out of last year to kind of, kind of, kind of, you know, during the headlights, kind of with the numbers coming at us and we, we asked them to lower it. So they pulled it out of, out of our reserve, which is, you know, I had some questions on that, that we got answered at the, from, from, from the chair and, and the, yeah, the chair. And, but anyways, still working towards, you know, you know, the core services that, looking at the core services that, that we get from, from SSE and trying to manage that and get a good, good feel on, on, you know, where we want to be with it, if, if we need all those core services and so forth. So anyways, my first year on, sitting on, on that committee, so still working hard to kind of get those down. And I think the, the good start right now is hopefully we can get an agreements of this funding formula and review it. And, and it would be nice for the, you know, to everybody to pay their fair share of the eight municipalities that are, that are with the SSE right now. Thank you.
Councillor Patel.
Thank you, deputy. So, yeah, I guess I agree with revisiting the funding formula, but on my last meeting with the Cultural Alliance, they want to revisit the funding formula on that as well. So I did mention that Midland has been providing a manager with our costs. And so is Tay wanting to revisit on every issue at, at point that we share costs with and are we going to just keep going with, you know, new formulas every few years to their will? Thank you.
I think that's a question for staff.
Through you, Deputy Mayor Prost, to councillor Patel. So are you asking, are, are we in support of reviewing our funding formulas for all of our cost-sharing agreements with the neighboring municipalities?
Well, we're in, the Culture Alliance is in draft right now for the budget coming up and they want to, right now, we're sharing equal costs. Besides Tay, they're only doing ten. Everyone else is doing twelve. But they want to review that funding as well and do it based on property assessment or population. So what, what I'm saying is this is going to keep going on. So we need to be careful. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. If we have no further questions or comments, you've heard the motion. Oh, sorry for that. Councillor McDonald.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Prost. I'm certainly in support of reviewing the funding formula for SSE. But to councillor Patel's point, I wish, again, I wish they would reconsider joining the user fee review that they've declined to participate in.
Any further comments? You've heard the question or the, sorry, the motion? All in favor? Sorry, I'm just making sure I had enough hands. All in favor? Carrie. Have a motion on the floor. The staff report CSR dash twenty twenty four dash seventy-three, twenty twenty five budget outlook dated September fourth, twenty twenty four be received for information. Can I have a mover and a second or to put on the floor? Councillor East and councillor Major. Do we have any questions or comments? Councillor McDonald.
Thank you. And I thank you for the, the, the report to prepare us to start thinking about our budget proceedings. I just have a few questions and actually, I, I don't know, for some strange reason, I suspected that councillor Meredith might have some questions. Just on page two and it says estimated increase for OPP service is a hundred and ninety thousand. It's, it's an increase. Is that an increase of coverage, like from, for, from them as well? Where, what do we pay in a hundred and ninety thousand dollars for another OPP officer or? What does that estimated increase for?
Through you, Deputy Mayor Prost, to councillor McDonald. So that is a, an estimate based on the existing service that we have today and their costs going up. Just, just like our costs go up. We expect their costs to go up. They did ratify their collective agreement earlier this year. And so there were some increases built into that. We don't have the billing yet. We usually get it in, I'm early to mid-October, I believe. So it, it is purely an estimate, but I, I didn't want to, to say nothing at this point. Thank you.
If I may, Deputy Mayor, just in regards to on page three, the investment in reviewing the town's current infrastructure, will that three point one million be reflected in our twenty twenty five budget? The one that we were just, that grant? Or three point thirty? Sorry, I missed a zero here. Thirty point one million. Does, is, how is that reflected in our budget? 30.1 million, does, is, how is that reflected in our budget?
That's a great question. So the $30 million is, is made up in the capital budget, right? And it is a couple of different projects, all of which is all user-based funded, right? So that's coming from our water and wastewater rates. And so we haven't yet run the numbers on that modeling that we typically do every, every fall on where those rates need to be. So it, it, it won't have an impact on your tax rate, right? Which is really the focus of this report. This report does talk about that, that modeling. And we've been on this 4% and 5% increase for water and wastewater rates for a few years now. We need to sort of relook at it. We do know, though, in our asset management plan, there is still a rather large infrastructure gap, right? So at this time, I would say I would be hesitant to say not to do the 4% and 5% without truly kind of reviewing those numbers again. But you have to remember, part of that grant is, is development-based as well, right? Which is really extending our services. And that infrastructure gap that we talk about all the time, that's just to maintain our existing services and replace and renew that infrastructure. So, you know, if I had to, if I had to say today, I would say that I would still expect rates to increase. 4% and 5% may feel a little heavy. But if we don't pay now, we pay later. So I hope that's, that's about as good as answers I can give at this point in time.
Another follow-up? Just another question on the report. On page five, there's additional, oh, maybe I've just answered my own question. The additional tax-supported revenue required, it doesn't list the OPP. That's not, because it's not additional tax-supported revenue. The 190,000 mentioned about the OPP on page seven, is that why?
So the OPP is under the other agencies, boards, commissions. And this table is really focusing on what we can control, what's within the town's budget.
Okay. And one last question, if I may. Under review of user fees, do we, I can't recall, do we get a list of the bylaw costs and fines? Is that? And then the parking? Is that, is another user fee? Well, I guess the bylaw, the fines isn't a user fee, but it is a, an income. I just wondered where that, whether it'll appear in the parking. I guess.
So fines isn't a user fee? It's more of that, when you, when you don't pay the user fee, you get the fine. So I'm not quite sure what you're asking about parking.
To be honest, neither am I. So let's just say it's, that thought, I wrote it down, but I didn't write it fairly. But thank you.
Council Emeritus.
Thank you, Deputy, Deputy Mayor Prost. Maybe you're, were you asking for about the Council McDonald, the actual report from bylaw, like a, a revenue? Yeah, so I don't think, I think we're, we're going to get a report like that. And I think I've asked for, before, usually at budget, we get the revenues from comparables from 2023 and so forth. So I don't think there's much of a report. While parking, there isn't, well, there isn't any revenue coming in, but there are still expenses. A little bit of revenue, I guess. But, but I do, to look forward to, to those reports. And we, we did on the ad hoc committee for parking. We got a little bit of, of the parking reports, but not the, the secondary, or the fines and, and that kind of reports we haven't had yet. So interesting to see where we're at, at there. And, but my one, a question I have on, on this, this report. So the budget drivers for, it's on page five, for, for the estimated tax impact of 6% blended, I believe. So that is, so we're probably looking around the seven-ish right now. So, so when we're looking at like 1.6 million dollars increases, I guess, which over last year's budget, which would impact, have a 6% impact on this year's budget. So a lot of work to do to get this kind of down and see where we can, unfortunately, when I'm looking at this, you know, we can't do much about labor, 400,000, a phase in of firefighters, 115,000. So there's some big numbers here. And then we get down to the 3% of the capital reserves. So, which we did have, so that would be the asset, the asset management plan, which I did have a, a meeting with CFO Baron on, yesterday or the day before. But so right now, we're at, you know, we got, did get a report of 1.3% prior before. But we were, kind of explained to me, we're at 2.7 for, for the last year. Didn't really hit our 3% goal. So are we trying to get that, to that, in this 6% increase? We haven't hit our 3% goal that we've been trying to for the 10-year capital plan. So in this budget, this, we're looking at the, the full 3% would be an 810,000 increase over last year's, I guess it was probably a 1.3 or maybe 2 points something. It wasn't a full 3%. So this was, this is an actual 3% that will impact the, but if we do a full 3% in, in, in the, the asset management plan. So that's what, that's what you're striving for here to get. And that'll give us, bring us to a 6% increase in, in the, the budget. Possible. Blended.
Yes, that is what the preliminary projections would, would show. That, so the 5, 5% to 6% was, was sort of the blended rate at this time, that, that anticipating. And of that, 3% would be dedicated to that asset replacement.
And just to follow, and, and just, just to make clear that we haven't hit our 3% goal in previous years yet on the asset management plan for the capital reserves.
So we did, I did run some calculations a few months back. And the last two years, we're, we're just shy of that, right? So we're in that 2.7, 2.6 range the last, the last two years.
Well, that makes me feel better. So it doesn't make me feel too good right now, is that 6%. So, and you'll see further on, near the end of this. I did have a notice of motion to try to hit, you know, a target rate of 2.5%. So I'm, and so we'll work hard to kind of get this number down. And hopefully if, Council, if I have Council support, we can try to get closer to that range. Thank you.
Mayor Gordon.
Thanks. You know, when we look at our asset management plan, we predict, you know, the, the predictable type of, you know, preventative maintenance type repairs to our aging assets. And we see how staggering that debt is right now. And we're not alone, municipalities all over the province. Because we were forced to do this by the, the province, it's exposed the reality of just how deep a hole we're all in when it comes to asset management. And we can't pretend it's not there, not suggesting we were before, but some municipalities lived in denial because the numbers were only known to them. Well, now everyone knows. So we look at things like the water main collapse that we had, that drained the entire water tower in like an hour and a half, right? And then the amazing all-hands-on-deck response and getting through that boil water advisory in record time. That pipe is still sitting there patched, and it could break another 15 or 20 feet down the, the way. It's just the same old pipe. So that thing's going to need relining or whatever hocus-pocus the engineers come up with for this. Because it supplies the plants down there that are major employers and that are huge revenue sources for the community and, and for those, those employers. That's not even factored into this yet. We don't even know what that's looking like, and that's water wastewater rate-based. So this injection of $30.1 million, which is an absolute record for, for a community our size, Mississaugas and places, Bramptons are getting money like that. And Midland got the same kind of money, is, is really an amazing injection of cash for projects that we otherwise wouldn't have to debt finance if we even had the capacity. Or we'd have to do in little tiny triplets over a decade or more because our, we just didn't have the capacity to pay that or even hold a, a loan of that magnitude. So, you know, I can't say enough about, you know, how amazing it was for our team to put that, that grant application in for the song and dance that went on down at AMO and all the glad-handing and all the, the backroom work to make this successful. And the fact that now we're extending John and our staff to help Tiny be successful in their grant, which in turn helps us help them by funding that, that add-on for receiving septicage. So there is a lot of work we're doing. And there's a lot of new projects that are going to hit the ground this coming budget that we weren't even thinking about last year because we didn't have the dough for it. So our, our staff are going to be stretched. The place is going to be under construction all over the place, around the municipality for the next few years, which is going to irritate some people. But where I'm going with all this is its growth. This is our way out of this, this financial hole we're in, where our costs have gone up, you know, with everyone else at the same pace. And we haven't been able to spread those costs around more people because we have been a low-growth, no-growth, stagnated-growth community for decades. So we're on the cusp of being able to, with this one grant, increasing our tax base by 15% and providing some 3,000 homes to people in our community almost immediately. You know, if the, if the economy was better and once we get the pipe in the ground, not to mention the other 4,000 or 5,000 homes that were already approved with our existing developers, that are just waiting again for the economy to, to get right, so they can actually sell them and afford to build them and make some profit. So we're poised for growth, and I really believe that's why we need to focus on that. North Star is growing our community. Because as we look at this forecast, there's no way to save our way into prosperity. These are fixed costs that we are largely completely out of our control. And all we can do is pass it along to our ratepayers. We can't run deficits, as we all know. So growth is our number one focus. We need to keep the, the pressure on developers. We need to keep the pressure on our planning team to develop, I mean, to approve the developments. Let's get homes built. Let's, I'm trying to schmooze developers into building purpose-built rentals and enjoying the benefits, like development charges are waived and GST rebates that are going to, you know, they're going to impact the rest of our community because we got to pay the freight for that, but it brings purpose-built rentals to our community. So this is all about growth. But this is not a good news story. I think that we're going to be able to remedy this time around. We may get it down a bit to our nickel and diming, which we do every year, right? Staff come with this forecast, and then next thing you know, the draft comes in lower than that. But it's still going to be not 2.5 for 3%. Fortunately, I think it's just unrealistic to expect. But we need to focus and be single-minded on, on growing this community and helping the, the builders build homes and grow this community and grow our tax base because that's our only way out of this. And we've been uniquely positioned, and the, the government has noticed this in Midland and North Simco, and is dumping and lavishing, lavishing us with cash to do this. So now we got to make it happen. So those are my comments on this. It's, you know, not a number I'm happy with. You know, people say I'm a cheerleader for the town, you know, I'm not being critical enough on these things. Well, part of my job description, literally, look it up in the municipal act, as I am the cheerleader for the town. And I do, just as you, look at these things, shake my head and go, man, there, I wish I could do something about this. But we haven't even talked about the new initiatives that we need to fund or that I'm going to ask to be funded, or the initiatives that you are going to bring to the table. This private security thing that, you know, I've been floating around and working with the OBP on, trying to scope out, to patrol our community, to try and make it safer, that's not going to be cheap. That's not a $50,000 or $80,000 ask. That's probably a one, maybe one and a half percent tax increase right there to fund that on a pilot project. The alternative is we don't, and we just keep on keeping on dealing with what we're dealing with our downtown and the community. So I know we're looking at this number going, man, how do we get it down? And I'm thinking, that's not even the number we're starting with by the time we put in our asks for the community. So we got a tough job to do, and we rely on our community. And for those, is our, is our budget survey still open? I'm CFO. Please, community, go and take the budget survey on our website. You're not wasting your time clicking on it. We need and want to hear from you. We don't lead you through the questions. We don't try and soften you up for tax increases. We just want to hear from you about how you think we can do, what's a priority for us in our community? And we're already looking at selling naming rights. We're doing non-resident fees. You know, we've got more opportunities for naming rights that hopefully get announced soon. We are trying to do things collaboratively in North Simco by, you know, helping our neighbors be successful to get money to help them fix problems that really aren't even our problem to deal with. And, you know, we're adding our voice to choruses to, to, to Counsel Patel's point, to relook at all of our funding models on things that we can to try and get more value for the money for our ratepayers, or maybe even abandon initiatives that we just don't feel any, any, you know, juice for the squeeze. So that's what we're going to be tasked with doing when we get that draft in December, is put an eagle eye to it. And, you know, including our asks, whether the ask we suggest to the staff is to enhance the service, which AKA costs money, or perhaps to remove a service, which could save money. And those are, we're, we're going to be asked to put both of those on the table. I know I've got some in both of those categories that I'll be looking at. So these are my comments around it. Am I super happy to see this report? Yes. Am I happy with the number? No. And no one could be. And I know staff are, you know, preparing us and managing our expectations with as much truth as possible. But I am hopeful that when we get our draft, it's going to look a little different than this, except for the things that we dream up as Council that we think we'd like to advance on behalf of the community as additional services or potentially cuts to services. So that's, that's really all I wanted to share on this, this heavy report. And thanks, Steph.
Council Emeritus.
Thank you, yeah. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Prost. And, and, you know, what you said is all true, and, and, and I would, I would agree. And, you know, sometimes our hands are tied. But this, this gives staff, and, and the 2.5%, I can, well, I'm going to repeat myself later on, but this gives staff a target. And now that it doesn't have to, you know, be 2.5, but it, it does, it, it does alleviate Council from having to try to claw back on what's not necessary and what is. So whether that 2.5 turns into four or 3.8, I don't know. But it's a target. Now, did I think it was going to come in at six? No. So when you're, when you're looking at 2.5 from six, I could probably say that's not feasible. But it, it's a starting point where we can, we can start and claw back on those, whether it's services from the, that we have to take away, pull back for this year, and then wait for that expected growth that, you know, that's gonna, it's just going to explode, which would be great. So, but until that time, we still have to keep people, you know, in their homes and, and, and in their pot, and have, have money in their pockets to, to feed their families. So, so we do have to make some sacrifices. Maybe our, our council asks, you know, they won't be, they won't be as, you know, as many as, as we, we, we'd like them to be. So we'll sacrifice up here, but at the same time, we, we need to, to pull out whatever the fluff is out of this, the budget, and what we need to do and not what we want to do. And that will get us down, I, I believe, to, to a range, which is, you know, acceptable. It'll still be a little bit higher, I imagine, than what I want. But it'll definitely not be in, you know, this is, this is a blended rate. So, so, you know, you're, you're looking at more than 6% here. So at the end of the day, that's the ask, and I don't want to have to claw back on, on, on services that I don't know that are important to, that staff need to do, whether it's infrastructure and so forth. But look at every aspect of, of, of what services we provide, whether it's infrastructure, whether it's sidewalks, you know, the program and so forth, to scale back on it to save a, you know, a point or two here or there. So I'm excited for, you know, for the, the, the fall and coming into, into winter for budget and see what we can, you know, we can do. And we, I'm working together with this Council and staff. I'm sure we can make it happen, so. Which I probably should have said this all, you know, at, at the motion. But keep all this in mind, so I won't be repeating myself, but thank you.
Council Patel.
Thank you, Deputy. So I'm quite happy with what, what we're seeing, and I'm confident staff will come up with better numbers. You know, when you look at Toronto, they're looking at 10-plus to be prosperous, Midland to have events, you know, to build better. We could be a 8-plus. So six is a good starting number, and if we can come down from it, I'm quite happy with it. So let's move forward. Thank you.
Okay, everybody's heard the motion. It's to be received for information. All those in favor? In unanimous, it's carried. 17.3 CSR 2024-. Seventeen point three CSR twenty twenty four dash seventy five, twenty twenty one consolidated financial statements approval. Can I have, um, a mover and a seconder to put it on the floor? Mayor Gordon and Counselor Major. That report CSR dash twenty twenty four dash twenty seventy five regarding the twenty twenty one consolidated financial reports. Or sorry, financial statements approval dated September fourth, twenty twenty four be received and sorry, that the twenty twenty one consolidated financial statements for the Corporation of the Town of Midland be approved. Mayor Gordon.
The operative word is twenty twenty one. And, uh, this is something that, uh, at least one person in our audience has been eagerly awaiting and absolutely urging us to do better on because, you know, we lack the ability to go after you know, funding from the infrastructure bank. Uh, when we don't have our things filed on time, there's a lot of reasons and rationale with change in personnel over the years while we got behind some technical ones. Uh, but the what it looks like is happening, we're catching up and I've been, I'm going to ask for the public, first, you know, uh, consumption tonight. When are we predicted to be on track and be fully up to date so that we can file current FIRs by the March sixteenth or whatever it is deadline? I know it's been an aspiration for a couple of years now, but we're getting there. But when can we, when, you know, we'll commit from our finance department now that it's seems to be back at full bench strength. Or when are we going to be back on tracks? We got twenty one, we need twenty two, we need twenty three. And, uh, then we'll be on back on track. I guess that's what I'm kind of asking because I know uh, one of our members of our audience is is probably just screaming it in his head because I know he's been corresponding with all of us for quite some time about this and absolutely pinpoint accurate in his criticism. Um, and I'm just glad to see this is moving ahead, but I did want to call it out. So.
Thank you, Your Worship. Uh, so twenty twenty two audit is underway as we speak. Um, if I about eighty percent complete at this point. Uh, the auditors have told me they expect to have statements by October. So, uh, we did have an audit committee meeting scheduled for late September that I will likely be reaching out to the committee any day now and saying, let's push it to October. Um, and that's largely not within my control. Filing of the FIR, uh, the FIR is also eighty to ninety percent complete, kind of waiting on those last changes for the statements. Um, which then you're right, does, um, kind of get us up to date on on our, um, our grants that we receive, right? And it's not that we don't receive these grants, we just receive them later, which again does impact, um, because we don't get interest, right? When we, you know, when the money is sitting in our bank account unspent, we're we're collecting interest. So it it does, it is, it does matter, right? So, um, please don't think that I don't think it does. Uh, twenty twenty three audit, our plan is then early January, February. Um, as you know, because we're going through budget. So as far as sort of meeting that May FIR reporting standard for next year, um, probably still not yet. Um, May is is, I would say, very ambitious for a municipality such as ours. We have, um, consolidating entities that we deal with, the the Midland BIA, the, uh, SSEA and, uh, the Heronia Airport Commission. Sometimes we are waiting on statements from from them as well. Um, but also just the sort of the nature of our business, um, the need to streamline processes, uh, it's it's difficult for us to get our statements out as early as May. Um, September has always been sort of that unofficial deadline, one that I certainly think is achievable. Um, so that would be, that would certainly be my goal would be to reach that that September deadline from a on an annual basis for, uh, reporting and for statements and audit because the more you're on on that cycle, you know, you're you kind of go from one to the other, right? The problem right is right now we're trying to do it all at once and it's, um, and it's quite a lot. So, yes, I certainly want to to see us caught up just as much as you do. Thank you.
Thank you. I think I said March, but you're right, mid the May filing deadline. So it'd be nice to be on the, you know, not on the naughty list, but I can understand the difference between May and September. I can live with that. It's just so long as we're current. So it sounds like we're working our way towards that and the audit committee is going to have some work to do. And, uh, it'd be awesome to finish this term off and have us, you know, nailing those things and be on time. That would be, even though council had nothing to do with it. It would be awesome if if, uh, you know, we could say that we got that fixed and eliminate that one bone of contention, which is really indefensible. So thanks for the update.
Counsel Emeritus.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Gordon. So I did pull the report just, um, and we did go through this, uh, in in the audit committee. Um, but I just want to, um, you know, if if one's looking at this report, um, and you're looking at, uh, the annual surplus in twenty twenty one. As reported here, it says it's five million, three hundred and thirty two thousand and so forth. And then you look at the the twenty twenty one annual operating surplus is and the tax-funded surplus is one point over a little over one point six million dollars. And you think, wow, you know, this is we got one point six million, like we saved that much money. And so where's where's the money? Like, why is our taxes at, you know, the following year at three or four percent? So, um, just it, you know, I kind of have the answers and I all then I when when I look at one point six surplus, I say, why, why can't you, you know, kick back two hundred and fifty thousand or one percent off of the tax rate the following year because of the surplus, right? Uh, to give a little bit of a breather to to the taxpayers because we were off the mark by one point six million dollars of tax-funded, um, you know, um, expenditures. So just just to kind of give a brief overlay, where does that one point six, when we have that surplus, where does the money go? I'm I know it goes into reserves or is it is it? So, because you think we'd be in good shape, but our 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 reserves are depleted. Um, right? So with these big numbers, one might think, uh, looking at this as a as a taxpayer saying, well, hell, what's what's going on? Where's the money going? So I don't know if you can kind of explain a little bit, uh, to whoever who's watching. Thank you.
Through you too. Counsel Emeritus. The one point six million dollar tax surplus was, um, outlined in a report to council, actually in December of twenty twenty two, uh, the twenty twenty one year-end report. And so at that time, um, I made recommendations to council on where that surplus should go. The bulk of it did go into what I would call operating reserves, right? And the reason for that is is kind of twofold. Uh, one, we knew we were going into a compensation review, um, which led to market adjustments to to staff, which we have phased in over uh, the last couple of budget cycles and will continue to, as you saw in the budget outlook report. And so in order to do that, we needed money in reserve to do that. Um, also, our some money went into planning reserve because we knew there were some projects, uh, that were that were scheduled in the capital plan that again were not not funded. When I add those up, sort of the contingency, the planning and then tax stabilization reserve, which we've also utilized in this year's budget cycle, um, by hiring the four new firefighters and and phasing in that cost over three years, right? So, um, that totaled seven over nine hundred thousand of that one point six. Uh, we also put some money into our DC discounts and exemption reserve of three hundred and sixty four thousand. That was again, sort of repaying a reserve that we had already took from previously, um, because of our, uh, current development charge, uh, background study and and bylaw where those discounts were in place and and rates were phased in, which means the tax base has has to fund it, right? And so how do you do that without putting an immediate hit on your tax base? You fund it from reserve. So, you know, in short, and we also, we also put some money into the building department reserve. So in that year, um, twenty twenty one, you also have to remember twenty twenty one was a year of COVID. And because of the nature of our business, when we shut down services, we actually save money, which is why you see that that big surplus as well, which we probably should have started with that. Um, but building also had a bit of a boom that year, right? A lot of people were, you know, concentrating on their homes. And so they had a little bit of a surplus. So that went into their reserve, which again, because building services are, um, are not tax-funded, at least today, right? And we need to continue to build that reserve so that the tax base doesn't have to, um, support that service. Um, and then some money went into the library. So the library, again, um, likely because of that COVID shutdown period, again, had saved, um, over a hundred thousand dollars. That went into their library equipment capital reserve, right? Because we know they they need new equipment. So that that did go into the capital side. So most of which, as I'm talking about, really went into the operating, which that doesn't impact that three percent that we talked about earlier, right? Because essentially it goes in one year and comes out the next. It it's a way to to mitigate those tax increases. Um, so that's twenty twenty one, right? Twenty twenty two, we didn't have much of a surplus. Um, and so again, it really went to operating twenty three surplus. We have not yet reported on. Uh, and obviously twenty four and and to date, we've we've budgeted to put in that two point six, two point seven percent that we we spoke about. But by the time we we've complete those year ends, you know, we may be near that three percent because we may have some surplus that says, okay, our operating is now is now good. You know, we've gone through that market study, we phased in our firefighters. Um, we may be able to tuck a little bit more away to capital to try and achieve that three percent for those years, which I at this point I'm hopeful that we can do so.
Thank you for that that. And then I just, um, just in in closing, I just want to make sure that, you know, and it just seems like there's a, there's there's a lot of money left on the table, but you're putting it in the right direction. So not just looking for tomorrow, but ten years down the road in the capital plan that, um, I'm I my main focus is 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 spending the money, getting great value for the money, but tucking away for the infrastructure in the future for sure. So I always said that before I was on council, we're just writing blank checks to here, there and everywhere. That's what I felt like as a tax payer, paying says, and not knowing what's going on. Feels like we just have a blank checkbook and we just write it right, write it out as needed, right? And then, um, but, um, you know, as long as we're being responsible, then, uh, you know, I think it's good to explain that to, uh, I I knew the the answer to that, but, uh, just to so everybody can hear where that money is going. So, um, I think it's important, uh, that whoever's watching. Because when you file through these reports and there's a lot of numbers here and half of it, I I don't understand. That's why I have to ask you so, uh, to get clarity. So, but, uh, thank you.
We have any further questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? That's carried. Onto number eighteen notices of motion. We have none. Nineteen general announcements. Here we go. Who would like to go first?
Counsel McDonald. Thank you. At the privilege and the honor of attending AMO top for the Town of Midland, small urban. It was in Ottawa. It was worth very worthwhile attending. It was my first AMO conference as a a participant. And, um, I guess the key message that I heard in any of the sessions that I attended was the, um, homelessness encampment situation that every municipality seems to be struggling with. And the 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 plan that I heard to me, which we all have to work on to end homelessness in the community, by the community and for the community. And I know we are going to try and well, we don't have a magic wand, as I've said lots of times, but we certainly are going to attempt to ease some of the burden as we work together in the community, by the community and for the community. And, um, yes, it was, it was good to share time with fellow counselors and meet other counselors from all over Ontario. And I appreciate the opportunity to have attended AMO. Thank you.
Counsel Emeritus.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, Deputy Mayor Gordon, our Deputy Mayor Prost. It's not even eight o'clock. Uh, just to, uh, follow up with, uh, Council, Council McDonald's, uh, AMO. Um, the one thing that, uh, while there's many things and homelessness and safety is 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 still, uh, again, uh, you know, as London a year ago was was a a main topic and kind of a carryover into, uh, AMO twenty twenty four. Still issues with that. Um, but great, uh, you know, we got to, uh, uh, plead our case with the the delegations and and which, uh, you know, staff and and Mayor Gordon, Deputy Mayor did a great job in pitching Midland and getting the thirty million dollar grant. So, uh, that's that's awesome. And, uh, you know, this town's ready to explode. The one thing that I I did, um, uh, took me by surprise is, uh, you know, we're in council meetings and, uh, you know, we're always talking about growth pays pays for growth. Uh, but in twenty twenty four and today, as environment and growth does not pay for growth, we're, there's a shortfall. So I don't know if anybody, uh, it was on the last day, there was, uh, somewhere that I went to and but they were talking about that because of the the expense of building materials and 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 time on a projects and so forth. There were about it. There's a twenty percent shortfall right now. So when we're with with these budgetary pressures that we're seeing at six percent and and so forth, we're not actually paying uh, for growth right now. So and then and you see everything rise. So, uh, hoping that, uh, you know, once the inflation rate calms down a bit and then, uh, I'm hoping that'll change and that, uh, because we were, we have been, honestly, we have been drilled that growth pays for growth, but it doesn't, uh, right now in twenty twenty four, unless they're wrong, unless those panelists are wrong, but it doesn't. So I found that, uh, you know, very, uh, quite alarming, actually. So, uh, but hopefully we can, uh, um, you know, fix that as, uh, as as time goes on. Uh, one other thing, um, over the past summer, um, played in the, uh, Sandy, uh, Sandy Mason Memorial Lawn Ball Bowling Tournament. Uh, were able to raise, uh, over ten thousand dollars. The goal was ten thousand, uh, from, uh, uh, the Mason family, um, and we were able to raise over ten thousand dollars for hospice Heronia. So, um, it was a great event and, uh, everybody had a lot of fun and, uh, and look forward to it, uh, next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Emeritus. Counsel Patel.
Thank you, Deputy. So, yeah, it's, I I believe, uh, going to AMO was very important. Our delegation came successful of securing the thirty million and, uh, like Mr. Emeritus said, Counsel Emeritus, that the panel on the last day with Steve Paken, which will be on the agenda, I he mentioned in October sometimes or end of September, where there is a thirty percent or twenty percent shortfall on the infrastructure investment in Canada. Thank you.
Counsel Ball.
Thank you. Uh, I agree, AMO I think is very beneficial for everyone to attend if they can. Uh, it does help with the community just by even we're a unique municipality, but we are also facing challenges that many other municipalities are facing. And those municipalities have, uh, seen far worse than we are seeing and seeing the path that we are on in Midland right now with homelessness and injection especially. And those people have already done the trial and error, uh, for a lot of things. So that gives Midland the opportunity to learn from other people's mistakes, other people's, uh, abilities and to see what played it well in other municipalities. So I think it's extremely beneficial just to connect with those communities and see what we can do and eliminate some steps that didn't work already in municipalities around us. Um, I also think that the last day was extremely beneficial. Uh, the shortfall is concerning for sure, but also in good news, we are on the right track for funding because the way that they're explaining funding models and how they choose how to give municipalities funding is who is who is thinking about the future, who is on the right path, what can we gain from funding these municipalities and what projects are most beneficial? And I think that really gave us the opportunity to get that thirty million dollars because we see that and we are seeing the end goal. And I think that that's been a main thing. A main topic in this council is wanting to plan for the future. So I think we're on the right track and I was really glad to hear that and really proud of all of us up here for that. So I appreciate that and I hope that anyone who didn't get to go can go next year. And I also want to call it the One World Music Festival, Brookside Music. They did a phenomenal job. If you didn't get to go, go next year. It was mind blowing, the stage transformation in Little Lake Park and the event and the talent was it was like mind blowing. I couldn't can't even say enough positive things about it.
Counselor Patel.
I'm sorry, I forgot to mention the biggest thing of the MO was Midland receiving the Jay Marshall Award, which, I mean, it was overwhelming and it's all the hard work the staff has done has shown by achieving that award. Thank you.
Actually, Counselor Patel beat me to it, but wanted to congratulate on the award again. It was it was one of the highlights of of AMO, seeing the Midland, you know, take the stage with you know, Andre Pepin leading the way with it with our staff and his team. Huge accomplishment. And again, when, you know, Counselor Ball is stating on how we're getting these grants and these are the forward thinking of our staff. Exceptional stuff in our in our water and wastewater and in in front of us. So we need that type of effort. And that's why we only we put our heads together and 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 try to come to a goal. We can get close to that goal. And that's why that two point five percent rate might just get might get close to there. So but I know we can do it. Thank you.
I just want to beat the mayor to his own game. Friday is the first mayor's golf tournament. And anyone wants to spend some quality time with me, I'll be out there representing the town of Midland and Bush Law's Auto Group. And anyone that gets a hole and wanted that hole will drive away a Bronco.
Thank you, Counselor Major. Mayor Gordon.
Thanks. Yeah, we have I've got lots. I'm going to save a lot of my things on the golf tournament for the golf tournament, which is this Friday, and I need everyone's prayers for good weather because depending on what app you use, it's either going to be a deluge all day, or it looks like it's going to push into the evening, which is what we want. So we definitely would some good weather. We're playing rain or shine. So if you signed up, bring your umbrella. The libations at each hole taste just as good in the rain as they do in the dry. So and we've got a fantastic primer dinner for you at the end. So that's this Friday and a shout out to the amazing sponsorship. We've got so many amazing sponsors. You know, we virtually hit my fifty K goal just with sponsorships and like, you know, it was incredible. I wasn't having to hound people or pop up in their bushes and, you know, shake them down. You know, I emailed them, I call them and they got back to me right away and they're just just rewarding us with, quite frankly, I look at it as a reward for all the good work we've done with our developments. Team, you know, rebuilding the relationships this term. I called, they answered. And we also have like a huge list of of silent auction items that were donated from the community and just it was so heartwarming. I mean, it's actually, you should see Karen's office. It's actually ridiculous. She's got so many things. And of course, our very own counselor East has has used his magic and crafted an amazing ring that there'll be a draw for for everybody at the event. So I can't just can't wait for you. For those of you who have signed up, come on out. It's not too late. You can visit the town's webpage, a big pop up will say, oh, mayor's first animal golf tournament. It may say the mayor's. However, it's councils golf tournament. It's just they usually brand it like this. And so this is a council initiative. Every penny that we raise on this, and I I believe we're going to hit our fifty K goal means that not a cent will have to go on the tax rate budget to support, to continue supporting our local charities through our community grants. And that was the objective that we just kind of dreamed up last budget. And you know, I got it started and handed it over to staff. I can't believe they took it over as easily as they did and just they killed it. So I'm it's going to be amazing. And they did such a great job. So I'm looking forward to September sixth. And you guys get to see me hook and slice a lot, a lot of duffing. I'm terrible. My short game's not bad. But if you want to have a good laugh, then ask for me to be on your team. I'll definitely show you how not to play golf. Next is a good news story from our guest house shelter. So Deputy Mayor and I went by the guest house last Wednesday, was serving lunch with some of the residents, got to spend some time. There's a wide eclectic variety of people, as you can imagine, use the shelter. There's twenty one beds in there right now and they're full. And that's the way it works. You know, if there's an empty bed, it ain't empty for long because coordinated access through the county will bring someone into our community from another community that's full. Put them in that bed. And the same thing happens in reverse. When there's empty spaces in other communities, people will leave our community and be shuttled into where Relyea or one of the other shelters in Barry. So eight people I learned were housed in the past month. That's through the effort of the staff at the shelter and Empower Simcoe working together and the place is open now all day for, you know, using the bathroom or whatever you need. Job skills, training, medical, it's open all day, every day. They've staffed up thanks to the, quite frankly, to the to the credit of the province and the county, the flow through funding that came from our last community, our safety symposium that we're having that are one in November, stay tuned for round two. But we know we heard and we put together a needs list and the county has blessed us with more funding for our shelter. So eight people and the average is normally one a month that they find a home for. I'm not a house, but I mean, a room or something like that. Get them out of the shelter system, supportive housing, wherever they can get them. Eight people. I just can't believe it. I was so proud of them. And when you talk to the folks in there, yeah, there's some of them are struggling. They got hard times. Some have some mental health issues. A lot of them have addiction issues. Some have a lot of them have both. Everyone has their story. You know, the guy that was heading his pants down on the main street that made all the fuss on the news and CTV. You know, he's not one of the folks in the shelter. That's just one of our local residents. I know him well. He knows me well from my former career. And then I think that's the takeaway. A lot of the problems we're having in our community and quite frankly, the crime, when I look at the press releases, they're locals. They're all names I know very well from my past life and sometimes it's their kids now. There are some people in the homeless system that are committing crimes because they have no money. They're not from the area. They have a drug addiction. I'm making excuses for them and we're looking at ways to crack down and identify the trouble troublemakers and hold them accountable to make our downtown and rest of the community safer. But I want to share the good news story that the shelter is not some flop house. You know, it's not one step away from the trap houses that we do have with a few in our community, which we're also dealing with, by the way, Robert Street being one of them. But this is this is a real good news story and it shows you that the the people that work there really genuinely care. And they're actively working towards rehousing folks that are down on their luck and don't have a place to live. So it was really heartwarming. I got a long meeting in the kitchen. And Deputy Mayor was out visiting with the folks more than I was, but talking to the men and women that are in there. Polite, respectful, certainly grateful. And some of them quite articulate, surprisingly. I mean, which was surprised to me anyway, maybe isn't a fair statement, but you know, they they get it and they were decent folks and we had a good chat even outside about policing themselves that, you know, the act of a couple of of their peers can bring down and bring negativity and close people's hearts and minds to all of them as a group, which is unfair. But that's human nature. So even they were going to try and look after some of these troublemakers on their own since we seem to be struggling with the ability to do that. So I just want to share that good news story that Guest House Shelter is open. If the staff are working really, really hard and they're having successes working with Empower Simcoe and other support organizations. And I I have hope. And so please join us at round two, the Hope Housing and Health Symposium. This November, we I think we're still nailing down the date and exactly how it's going to be, but for sure, it's going to be a town hall format in the evening where you can come and talk to the panel and vent and also learn about all the amazing resources that are being put in. Oh, there's never enough. But and learn about the work we're trying to do moving forward. Like after, you know what? I had more stuff, but you know, I tend I get criticized for talking too much. So I'm going to leave it with those two things and thanks for humor me.
Thank you, Mayor Gordon. You're talking too much. Loved it. I didn't have to tonight. You said everything I would have liked to, especially about the Guest House Shelter. I was amazed because it's not like it was before. And I see a lot of hope there. And I think we have to get up every day and find hope for everybody, every day, everywhere. Anyway, we do have we're down to twenty. A motion to close committee of the whole and to resume formal council session. So twenty twenty one, it is moved by Counselor Major and seconded by Counselor Meredith that the committee of the whole rise and report. All in favor? That's carried. Back to you, Mayor Gordon.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. Motion here moved by Counselor Patel, seconded by Counselor McDonald, that the recommendations of the committee, the whole for the meeting of September fourth, twenty twenty four be adopted as resolutions of council. All those in favor? That is carried. All right. Next, we're moving on to motions for which notice was given. And number one, which is twenty two point one on your agenda, moved by Counselor Meredith, seconded by Counselor East. That for the twenty twenty five budget, staff be directed to come back with a target rate of two point five percent tax increase. Counselor Mayor, take it away.
Well, thank you. So I think I said quite a bit on this topic tonight. I do want to reiterate that you know, when coming in at at two point five percent, that was the probably I was I was thinking we were coming in around, you know, four percent, right? So the two point five percent is is not you know, I could see right now is not a a target that's probably doable, especially with all the information we have now. But in saying that, I think the six percent rate is is we can do a lot better than that. So as I said, when we when staff get together, I I'm sure they can they could take, as I said before, you know, whether you want to call it fluff or whatever, whatever is needed but not wanted. And if it has to be some service level adjustments that council can decide whether, you know, to say, yeah, continue with the service or so forth. But I'm just putting this back on staff instead of us, you know, trying to hammer away at at a budget that we can all, you know, feel good about it at at the end of the day. So I I'm throwing it back at staff to come back and and, you know, do all your little, you know, look in all the nooks and right, wherever you can find savings. You know, in the past, we've had, you know, we've we've had a list and I'm we're going to get, I I believe that'll come in in the in the budget that, you know, project set haven't even may have not even been started from twenty twenty three. Or or in twenty twenty four, that could be pushed. Who knows? I mean, anything that you guys can can come up with to get this this down. You know, to a reasonable number where where we feel comfortable up here would be you know, very appreciative, not only to, you know, to our residents for 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 one thing. So I'm here about the people and 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 looking out for them and and without handcuffing, you know, our operations and our and and the ability to grow. So I'm throwing it back at staff to come in with a target of two, two and a half percent, but not holding to that two, two and a half percent, but you know, roughly somewhere around there, just just a starting point. So that's what I'm asking for council support on here. And if we can you know, get that 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 initial outlook down, I think it would be helpful to a lot of residents in twenty twenty five. Thank you.
Counselor McDonald.
Thank you for initiating this direction of the target rate, but I don't think it's realistic. And I feel that Counselor Meredith, we were elected to review what they bring forward. And I can't support this note this motion because I think it's our job to get it down to two point five. If they come across with two point five and we don't appreciate where they've made the the cuts, we're going to be adding stuff. So I I prefer they come to us with not six percent, but a realistic increase and then we can we know it's going to be an increase. Then we can do our work. Thank you.
Counselor Patel.
To Counselor Meredith, two point five is not realistic. I do agree with Counselor McDonald that if we set a target and then we go up from that, it would not be a great idea. Let staff do what they're doing and we we figure it out from there. Thank you.
Counselor Ball.
Thank you. I think we've had a lot of conversation tonight and I mean, the F O is here. So I think that she has heard our wishes and will probably look at it a little closer, but I don't want to put that target on her. I think that's a stressful target to try and reach. But I do think that she has heard our concerns and will come back with something a little lower than what we are looking at right now.
Again, I made two cents, I guess, and now. So the wording of this is a direction to staff. And I think that's just what we can't do. We can't handcuff them or hobble them at this point. We've heard the, you know, the issues that are at play. And this this motion you brought forward earlier in the summer, totally in good faith, before having this new information. So I think I mean, even though I get you're still arguing and supporting it right now, I think I agree with other counselors. Staff have heard our conversation tonight. And we haven't even added our asks yet to, you know, to the budget. So to a larger degree, we were, you know, we're going to be authors of some of these increases or potentially decreases, depending what we dream up in our in our documents we submit to staff. So I I'm disinclined to support this motion right now, based on all the good conversation we've had tonight, which is not licensed to come back with some ridiculous number from staff, but I don't believe you're going to do that anyway. And so I don't, I just think if we pass this tonight, the way it's worded, knowing that it isn't really realistic, I think we're doing staff into service and setting them up for failure. And then they look like bad people because they haven't followed our direction, which is how this is worded. So I'm I'm disinclined to support this tonight, but I get the rationale for it and I I understand the spirit of it. And we're all going to work collectively together to get the tax increase, which there will be as low as reasonably possible for the twenty twenty five year. And that's my commitment and I'm sure is of each of you. So just my thoughts on this for before we get to the question. Counselor Meredith, it's your motion, please.
Thank you. And I I totally understand all your, you know, all your your worries on on this motion. In in the budget report, I don't believe this, the ABCs are are in the six percent. Is that is that correct?
I did factor in a percentage for the OPP, which would be in there. We don't know the county yet, which is and you know, that that does have an impact on that blended rate, right? Which we did review. And so if the county is is less than our five to six projection, that that helps us, right? Blend down. The education has been flat for a number of years, you know, hopefully that that remains because that helps also blend down, which is how we got to the three point nine nine percent last year, right?
Sorry. SSE A, Roni Airport. They're they're not in here. So and then, as I said before, I imagine Culture Center is going to come back to us for their insurance. It's another twenty thousand dollars a year. It might be twenty five this year. And then you were looking, you know, Quest Art has has some struggles. They're going to be coming asking for it. So so what I'm getting at here, right? So we're starting at our own five to six blended. Blended without without putting on, right? Another, let's say, one percent for the H C board. So and that's why you know, yes, realistically, two point five, when you're coming back at me at six, doesn't seem realistic. So and I understand why you can't support it. But you know what? From past, the past two budget cycles that we've done, we've been able to just just past two budget cycles that we've done, we've been able to just just struggle to get it down a a point. So if we're going to be at seven, you know, I'm even looking at 8% right now, right, with the ABCs, and then blended maybe down to seven, and then we might get it back down to six. So so that's, that's my concern. And then going from, you know, you know, just looking alone at my own, you know, the tax dollars that I pay, right? So it's creeping up there to where, and that's just me, I'm looking, I'm looking at other residences and, you know, it's, it's the cost of living in Midland. So it's basically, do you want to be in Midland or you you don't, then that's, that's the way, the direction we're going, which I don't like that direction. But and hoping this growth, and we've had growth before, it's been stagnant for a while. But we still see, you know, we're never, we're never, we have to put 3% away to the asset management plan. So our 3% is net zero. So, you know, we're going to average from four to 5% a year, the way I'm looking at it right now. And so people that are out there watching, living in Midland is, you know, this is what you can expect every year. So plan your future accordingly, if you want to be in Midland or not. So that's, that's why I'm, I'm very, you know, stuck on my number at 2.5%, which is not feasible. And I get it. So the next question is, is, you know, do you want to be in Midland or not? And if you want to be in Midland, you're going to be paying four to 5% a year. That's the way I see it right now. So and that's my concern. And that's why I put forward that motion.
All right, no other discussion? Call in question? All those in favor? Attaboy. I've been there many times. All right, that is defeated. I don't need to call against or opposed. But they do opposed? All right, we're there with the spirit. And all the points are well taken. Okay, oh, the next one's mine. So I need to yield the mic. Deputy Mayor, can you handle the next motion for which notice was given way back a few months ago? I actually forgot about this. And I remembered when I read the agenda. It's lovely to see it.
Okay, we have a motion moved by Mayor Gordon, seconded by Counselor McDonald. That in, sorry, that in recognition of his long service to the town of Midland and his passion for Midland sports and recreation, specifically baseball at Tiffin Park, council support naming a currently unnamed roadway north of Adam Dixon Way in Tiffin Park to Fred Floodway with an unveiling and dedication in the fall of 2024. Do we have any questions or comments?
I can add some color to this. So Adam Dixon Way is your way into the park. And then you then you hang a left, which is north-ish. That doesn't have a name. So much as we've done with like Rickelany Way, these little unnamed strips. So we tried to find a place and as luck would have it, there happens to be an unnamed section in this park that was so near and dear to him all those years. So the opportunity presented itself. And I'm seizing upon it and looking for council support.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, counsel, you've heard the motion. All in favor? That's unanimous and carried.
Thank you very much. Next, I have a motion here moved by Deputy Mayor Prost, seconded by Counselor Major, that bylaw 2024-45, being a bylaw to remove part lot control on Lot 34 within registered plan of subdivision 1508, and to repeal bylaw 2023-73. And so this is the housekeeping in relation to the report earlier. All those in favor? Any opposed? It's carried. Next, a motion moved by Counselor East, seconded by Counselor Patel, that bylaw 2024-46, being a bylaw to adopt the proceedings of the regular council meeting with closed session held September 4, 2024, be passed and enacted. All those in favor? Any opposed? Carried. And last but not least, moved by Counselor Bald and seconded by Counselor Patel, that this regular meeting of council with closed session adjourned at 8:00. Oh, it just went 8:01. Darn it. Okay, 8 o'clock, 8 o'clock. I'll look at my computer. 8:00 PM. All those in favor? Any opposed? Carried. We are adjourned. Thank you much.